Our next item is public forum. We have Kimberly Smith speaking on road safety issues. Welcome. And we have three items for public forum and the meeting to follow. I remind people they have five minutes to come and speak to us and then take questions, if you're comfortable doing so.
Kia ora koutou, thank you for having us. Kuaor Kimberly Smith, te hau kuaui kaual.
Kuaor Tania Hinwood.
So we're here to ask the council to implement some road safety or road calming measures on the stretch of George Street between Warrendore and Duke Street. So on the second piece of paper, there's a map there that indicates that for those who are not familiar. The reason why we're asking this and we're submitting a petition with over 500 signatures in support of what we are asking is because there's a number of issues with this section of the road. The issues are kind of outlined for you on the front page of that piece of paper there. In a nutshell, they're the fact that George Street Normal School straddles the road. It exists on both sides of the road. And the property of George Street Normal School is also used outside of normal school hours. There's a before and after-school care program that runs, there's holiday programs that run, Saturday morning music runs classes there on Saturday mornings, and the Leith Valley Presbyterian Church runs services there on Sunday mornings. So the property is used, the whole facilities on both sides of the road are used pretty much throughout the day, beyond the normal school hours, Monday through Friday, as well as on the weekends. So that creates a lot of traffic, especially young children traffic that need to cross that road regularly. In addition to that kind of uniqueness of that property, the crossing, it is a signal, traffic light crossing between the two sides of the school. However, it is located in extremely close proximity to the intersection of George Street, Warrendore Street and How Street. And this creates lots of confusion for drivers. They either, if they're travelling south on George Street, they confuse the lights at the crossing with the lights ahead at the intersection, and they often miss it, run through, or stop too late. Coming north on George Street, or especially coming from Warrendore or How Street, where you can't see the crossing, you go through that intersection on a green light, boom, there's another light right there all of a sudden that you need to stop at. And many cars aren't expecting that. And what's happened is we've heard over the years a number of stories of near misses, red light running incidences. We've got some reports of more recent ones to actually submit to council. And an accident, my son was hit by a car crossing on the green man, a car running the red light at the beginning of August. So we've got all of that report to submit to the council as well, in addition to some other official reports from near misses and incidences. Because of that, we are asking the council on the petition, so if we flip over on the back side of that first piece of paper, the petition asks for four things. For the crossing to actually be raised and painted to make it more visible at road level for drivers to see. The installation of speed bumps on either side of the crossing to actually physically slow traffic down before they get to the crossing and make them more aware that there is something there they need to be aware of. Either slow them down as they go through it on a green light, or slow them down so that hopefully they see the lights and see the crossing and realise they need to actually stop at that red light. We started the petition before we had official word, but we were also asking for implementation of the school speed zone. We understand that that is coming for George Street, and we want that to stay at the front of your minds and come soon. However, and we're really thankful and appreciative of that, but we don't see that as holistically addressing the issue at the crossing and cars still running the red light there. And the kind of fourth point was to have warning signs, particularly on the feeding-in roads where you can't see that the crossing is there, indicating that after you pass through this intersection, there is a pedestrian crossing with the lights that you might come up to quickly, so to be aware. We're also submitting a variety of evidence around the effectiveness of road calming or road safety measures, particularly for pedestrian safety. So we've got a plethora of information from a variety of resources that we're submitting alongside the petition and the evidence of some incidences as well. Right, anything else to add?
No, I think that pretty much summarises it.
Thank you. When you say you're submitting, you have them with you? Okay, that's fine. We'll just leave them with staff.
Yes, yeah. And there's also, there's a lot of our support, we've been, sorry, open and honest in communication with the school, the principal and the board of trustees. We have a letter of support from the board of trustees for the petition submission. Yeah, so we've got a variety of letters here.
Great, so are you happy to take questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Lord?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if staff, if we've had, we have in the past increased money to go into school signage and that sort of thing, and I'm just wondering if there's any plans for this particular school anyway.
I've just had a quick comment from Simon, so you know, this is one of the schools where we're doing the school safety improvements and all of the suggestions. I can't promise we will pick up on every suggestion that's been raised, but we'll certainly, Simon's got, will have the complete suite of what's been suggested, and the team looking at doing the road safety improvements outside George Street will pick them all up and think about whether each one of them is the best way to deal with the issues that they've raised. So yep, we'll have a look at all of them.
Councillor Millie?
And I think just to, maybe Mr. Drew can confirm, it also includes calming, road calming activities as well, right of speed.
Councillor Walker?
Thank you, Kimberly and Tania. A question of concern, is your son okay?
Thank you for asking. He is okay. It's, yeah, it was quite, quite a significant event.
He's miraculously okay.
Yeah. Tania was the first responder, her and her husband, I arrived before the ambulance came, and we did spend time in the hospital. He has recovered, but it has been relatively miraculous, considering the severity of the incident that happened. And we have taken it as a warning. I don't want to be, I can't, I won't be able to look the next parent in the eye whose child's in a worse situation and say I did nothing. I hope that you guys put yourselves in a position where you will feel comfortable that you can look that next parent in the eye, based on what decisions you make.
Just to add, we know that the school zone is coming, and there are two main things that really you want to focus on, and that being that, other than at 40Ks, we want to get that 30Ks per hour during passing the school zone. That's what it suggests, that 30Ks is so much at the majority, and that comes before the car, because the car's in a choice of slogan. And just also, because the school zones are often, they will have a particular time of the day when they will commit the 40K, or a varied time zone, and rather that be throughout the day, and the school and the board of trustees supports us in that, because the school, as we need, has a strategy, as we've outlined, and so the school is using it throughout the day.
And same with the weekend on Saturday morning music, which is an education-funded, Ministry of Education-funded, you know, opportunity for students.
Dr. Koro, thank you for your efforts and for your energy. All of the detailed suggestions will be an opportunity to input in through the formal process as that's going forward, but thank you for the work they've done to this point. It's really helpful to have that at the front end. Thank you. Welcome. So your papers have been circulated in advance, you can take them as read, but you have five minutes.
Thank you. Sorry to admit, we actually have a grammatical error in the first line, but good information, good decisions require good information. And when I listened to you prior to the election and the election speeches, good information was something in very short supply. So I thought we should go through some of the things that seem to worry people about climate change, because most of you think that we should be doing something about it. So perhaps if we can look at some of that data. Now, this data is just like Dunedin temperatures, it's data that's collected by people, it's analysed by scientists, it is what it is, and that's what you have to accept. So in extreme weather events, the first up is hurricanes, and as you can see, there's actually a downward trend in frequency, but there's quite a variability in the accumulated cyclone energy now. Accumulated cyclone energy is a combination of intensity and frequency, so it gives an overall pattern. And while it was high in the 90s, you can see running downs from there through the middle of that jumble, it's clearly on a downward trend at the moment. If we go over to page two, to tornadoes, you can see they are on a decline. Global droughts, there's nothing out of the ordinary at the moment, it's in par with similar increases in the past or decreases, it's just ticking along as it has done always in the past. Precipitation, I don't have the global figures at the moment, I know they were increasing towards the peak of the El Nino in 2016, but the American figures and the Australian figures both show pretty much par for the course. Australia is increasing in rainfall, and there's a wee global storm days if you want to analyse that. Over to page three, forest fires, you can see a distinct decrease despite all the present fires around the world, they are in total a decrease, and particularly so if you look at wildfires from the USA, particular decrease after intensive grazing and better firefighting techniques came in in the early 1900s. Now, the Amazon fires, I put that in because you'll remember the hoo-ha on the TV about the Amazon fires in July, lungs of the world and all that sort of stuff. Well, there is the actual full graph, and as you can see, they were far higher back in the 90s and early 2000s than what they are recently. The last figure there is January to July, it's not the full year, but it was on course to be no better, no bigger than the previous year. So most of that was a political thing, had nothing to do with reality. Okay, if we move on to global temperatures, that's the latest, University of Alabama Huntsville satellite temperature, and as you can see, there is a general trend that goes up through that data. Now, that's been recently analysed, being the 40th anniversary since the satellite started recording temperature. And that slope is 0.095 degrees per decade. So over the 40 years that the satellite has been operating, we have a total temperature increase of 0.38 degrees. Now, the next one down, T max, T min, most temperatures, particularly historical ones, were recorded as simply maximum, minimum for each day and average for each month. And this is for New Zealand, and as you can see, there is a slight increase in the maximum temperature, and this is a red line at the top of that graph. And then the bottom of the graph, there's a blue line, is the minimum temperature, and again, you can see there's a slight increase, not as much as the upper one.
Is your five minutes, Mr. Foster, if you could wind things up?
Oh, is it?
I'd be happy to take, happy to take questions after that.
Okay. So the thing is there, that we experience 18 degrees in New Zealand, difference between minimum, maximum, and below is my Merton results, which show a 20-degree change in temperature, this is on the 2nd of November. Now, 20 degrees, and we've got 0.38 over four decades, and all the animals and plants experience 20 degrees in a day, we can hardly call that something they're going to struggle to live with. Now, the next page is data distortion by scientists.
Are you happy to take questions, Mr. Foster? Are you happy to take questions?
Yes.
We have five minutes available for public forum, and your five minutes is up.
Okay. I might just add, the most important part, I don't think, I'm not sure about my five minutes, but is this on sea levels. Perhaps someone would like to ask a question about sea levels.
Well played. Are there any questions, councillors? Councillor Van De Wiss rising to the task.
Thank you very much for bringing us this amazing range of information. My question is particularly regarding the wildfires in the USA and the livestock grazing and fire suppression era, where these fires are dramatically reduced, following what are 1875, whatever. Is it your opinion that we should graze the area that has recently been ravaged by fire in the water collection area at both Deep Creek and Deep Stream? Do you think that if we had livestock grazing there, that the chance of a major fire, as we've just had, would be significantly reduced?
Absolutely. In middle, in central Otago, about six, seven, eight years ago, after much of the central Otago land, highland, got in from Alexandra, got handed over to dock and was retired from grazing not long after they had a major fire that swept through the lot. The stock grazed the grass and prevented going rank, so you got less fuel.
Right. Do you also understand, though, that the reason for not grazing in the water catchment area is so that we don't have the animal faeces issue to the same extent from grazing animals than we would just say from the possums and whatever else that would be there anyway? Do you recognise that there is actually some value in not grazing in a water catchment area, simply to reduce the bacterial runoff?
I recognise there's a potential there to do that, but I think one would have to do the testing, because most animal faeces solidify and sit on the ground, they don't get washed into rivers and creeks. And I think if you test the water, for example, all of Otago rivers, bar Dunston, Thompson's Creek, are swimmable. None of the city rivers are swimmable. Thompson's Creek is getting this runoff from Moamakau, which is why it's 1,200 bacteria per 100 mls, which is the unswimmable limit. Virtually no rural river in New Zealand is in fact unswimmable. And that's according to Neva's data, to the Lawa data, and to the regional councils' data.
So on that basis, it would be your recommendation that the DCC should at least look at grazing that area in order to prevent a recurrence of the problems we've just had?
Absolutely, but I think you should also do that in conjunction with scientific testing of the waterways before the grazing and after it, to see if there's any detectable difference.
Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Yeah, Mr. Foster, thank you. I'm actually happy to indulge you. Do you believe sea level, sea levels are rising and that we need to mitigate against this?
The data I have presented comes from Paul Dinnies, who has analysed New Zealand four main centres, as you can see on that graph, but which have come out an average of 1.7 millimetres a year, which is pretty much a world average. What he has done also is to put a GPS recording, which takes about five years to do this, on the reclaimed land which the tide gauge is on. And that shows a subsidence, which you can see in this middle graph here, a subsidence which amounts to 0.67 millimetres a year. Now, when you take that off the sea level rise for Dunedin, at 1.36 millimetres a year, you get Dunedin with a 0.69 millimetres a year rise, and that's over 100 years. Now, there has been no increase in that, in fact, it was probably very little increase since 1974. There was a significant little jump up towards 1974, thereafter it's remained pretty flat. So until sea level actually starts to do something, then you don't have an issue. But I would like to say that what, on my back of Paul Dinnies' work, what the council could do, which was very constructive, was to get, to get Paul Dinnies to do a vertical land motion study in southern Dunedin, because if you have an area like that, which has got water in it, many cities in the world are subsiding because they're drawing the water out for the city use. So you've got to be careful that you don't draw it down the water table, but you do get rid of the surface water that comes in, because if you draw it down, you'll increase the subsidence. And I think you'd need to take advice from the geologists at the University of Otago and from Paul Dinnies, and do the surveys and find out. And you, because we don't know from his results how much of that subsidence is tectonic, i.e. affecting the whole of the east coast of South Island, and how much is subsidence due to compaction. And so you can expect that compaction in southern Dunedin to some extent. You would not expect compaction if you put a GPS on, say, the Schist Rock at Brighton, which is part of the base structure of the whole of South Island. That would then determine the difference between what is local compaction and what is subsidence, so tectonic activity. And you can see in that graph that in fact Dunedin gets uplifted by an odd millimetre or two by every magnitude six-plus earthquake in the fjordland. So these things are quite widespread, but you'd need to have better information.
Councillor Lord?
Yeah, just in relation, Peter, to the sea level rise and the uplift, have you, have you got any data that would, like, you're saying there it's, the subsidence is 0.67 a year, but the average increase is 1.7. Would the subsidence not make it a worse situation? Would that sinking, or was the uplift outweigh that?
No, the, no, the tide gauge is relative to the land, so for Dunedin it's 1.3, 1.36. So that's measuring, so if the land is going down, the sea is coming up. So that 1.36 includes the subsidence, that's just what the gauge measures.
I think it was about three years ago, they installed, Neva installed on Green Island.
Is this a question, councillor?
Yep, it is. You let me finish, I'll answer it, ask it. The, three years ago, they installed a land gauge on Green Island to, a GPS-located one, so it could actually measure whether the land was sinking or rising. Do you have any results from that?
Yeah, the results are very preliminary, because it takes five years to get any data that they are comfortable with. So far, it's been running for three years, and Paul Dinnies told me the other day that it's looking like a subsidence of about 2.3 millimetres a year, because Green Island was a damn stupid place to put it. And the reason I say that is because on one side, within half a kilometre, it's got the Akatari fault line, and on the other side of it, within half a kilometre, it's got Fault B. And then you come inland a little bit, and you've got the Te Tiri fault. So you're right, sandwiched between two fault lines, which are uplifting, which means that Green Island is going down. So his preliminary results show it about 2.3, and I think the thing is reading 3.2 millimetres a year, which means that the total sea level rise measured by the Green Island one is of the order of 0.9, which would be similar to the rest of New Zealand.
I'll move from the chair that we extend the time limit for public forum beyond half an hour. Second, councillor Gary, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Foster, for your time, I appreciate that. Ms. Avia?
At the recent Starlight Conference in Takapo, international researchers shared their findings about the harm of blue-rich light at night on human health, ecosystems and the environment. And I spoke about the positive steps being made in Otapoti Dunedin to protect our precious wildlife with shielded low glare 2,200 Kelvin LED streetlights. Although Transport Dunedin consented to this due to the undeniable negative effect of white light on ecosystems, a wider discussion will eventually follow about the harm to human health and safety too. I'm speaking now on behalf of the Lightwise Guild for Responsible Lighting, and I'm here for four reasons. One, to highlight how crucial it is to get our street lighting right. Two, to ask why we're not also protecting our urban ecology. Three, to emphasise that human beings need safe lighting too. And four, to show you an innovative solution which I brought in. While the contract for the city's LED retrofit is already being signed and it's been communicated, it's too late for any changes. The LEDs haven't been installed yet, and it's going to be far less costly to make amendments now than to rectify matters once the lights are in. Although Transport Dunedin has stated they have canvassed adequately, how can that be the case when there is still too much misunderstanding and a lack of awareness about the many drawbacks of LED technology evident by the failed retrofit trial in southern Dunedin? For these reasons, in March this year, DCC councillors were sent a copy of an appeal made to the Minister of Health in November 2018 for safer LED street lighting. It focused solely on health and safety and outlined not one, two or three problems, but 16. Two months later, another submission was sent explaining how the LEDs on trial in southern Dunedin were unfit for purpose and where they breached the NZTA's own guidelines. This document included photometric data and images to back this up, and it's why I brought this luminaire today. While there's not enough time to explain its benefits and differences, sadly, there isn't a light source like it on the NZTA's M30 list, which councils need to choose from to receive the 85% subsidy. This is because the NZTA and the lighting industry have both generally neglected their responsibilities, and why it's vital safer, fit-for-purpose LEDs like this are added to the M30 list. In the last three weeks, we've also tried six times with no success to demonstrate this innovative LED to Transport Dunedin. Surely, it behoves decision-makers to see advances in technology that deliver better outcomes, and surely Dunedin deserves safe, biologically, ecologically responsible street lighting. Thankfully, our city won't have 4,000 Kelvin LEDs, but the planned 3,000 Kelvin LEDs are also unsafe. As has happened overseas, public concern is increasing about the LED street lighting being rolled out in New Zealand. For example, the recent media coverage about an Oamaru boy harmed by the 4,000 Kelvin LED streetlight outside his bedroom and on his street. It's a gross error to use high-intensity light sources that trick living organisms into thinking it's day when it's night. It's also misguided to install street lighting that instead of improving conditions worsen them, compromising not only health, vision and wellbeing, but also safety, security and life quality. At the Starlight Conference, experts confirmed what we've been warning the DCC about since 2015, and evidence continues to mount. Last year, at the Alang Conference in Utah, it was agreed there's now enough science to drive into governmental change. While its commendable Transport Dunedin has approved 2,200 Kelvin streetlights for areas of ecological value, for this to be a success, the LEDs must deliver safe, effective and appropriate lighting, but the outdated M30 list prevents this, just as it prevents safe illumination for the rest of our city. This includes Cavashum, home to the velvet worm, North East Valley, which provides a vital green corridor linking the Orakanui Eco Sanctuary to Dunedin's green belt and the green belt itself. And there are informed residents in these suburbs strongly against blue-rich 3,000 Kelvin LED lighting. We can have energy-efficient, safe lighting with adaptive features without any of the risks and drawbacks, and Dunedin can be a leading example to the rest of New Zealand, but we need your help to make it happen.
Definitely timed. Are you happy to take questions?
Absolutely.
Questions, councillors?
I'd also like to switch on the lights. I can take questions while I'm doing this writing. This is a fit-for-purpose luminaire. It's very different to what's been currently rolled out in New Zealand, and there's lots of reasons why this is the kind of lighting that we really should be moving towards. You'll notice it has a different colour, and that's one of its features. Is there any questions? Because I can go into it into more detail.
Don't doubt that. I have one really obvious question, what is the blue bit?
Oh, that's to communicate, it's part of technology with lighting these days, so that if there's problems with the light, it is communicated to, no, the central management system.
Thank you, councillor Millie. It's curious to know what the Kelvin was on that particular light.
That's a 2,200.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Van De Wiss?
Hello, the cost difference? How much more expensive are they?
These are affordable at the moment with the currency exchange from Canada, they're at $3.80, but that's without the company making any profit.
So how does that compare to, say, the 3,000 that we are currently on track for?
If you could get me the actual figures, I would be delighted to be able to say how they weigh up.
And given that the figures perhaps are not available, you would have some idea, is there a significant cost involved in the lower Kelvin, do you think? Or do you think it may be similar-ish?
I think that the cost of having safer lighting, well, it totally supports having that safer lighting. The difference between them is not significant enough for those to be... those to be not chosen. Does that, is that clear enough?
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. We don't have the costs here either, so it'll be interesting to find out what a real comparison apples to apples is. You mentioned Canada, did, did you say they came from Canada, these lights?
That's right, this was brought in especially because of the work that we're doing here in Dunedin. The company brought it in, they're doing a retrofit in New Way at the moment with those lights, yeah.
Okay, are they actually manufactured in Canada, or are they manufactured in China?
The componentry is manufactured in Japan, and the actual outside of it, I think, is outsourced to China, but it has nothing to do with the internal workings, and I understand the company is also looking to change that. So the actual internal workings, which is really important, that can be guaranteed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I'd also like to add that this is just one light source. Companies around the world are starting to sit up and pay attention to this problem. So at the moment, we're also dealing with a company in the Netherlands called Maxibel, there's also a company called Cree, which is producing a 2,200 Kelvin, and there will be others. Better Com in New Zealand also do it, 2,200, but as far as I know, they don't use diffusing optics and, and things to mitigate the glare and deal with the non-uniform light distribution. And that's why we need technology that actually addresses those other issues. Choosing the cheapest light because it meets the tender process is not the way to go with our lighting. We need to prioritise safety and health and effective lighting, and the, has, has been expressed numerous times, what's being delivered is not meeting those criteria, and we can do better, the technology is available, we just need support.
Thank you, Ms Avia, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
That is the end of the public forum, on to the meeting proper.